Hi, good evening. Welcome to our December Board of Education meeting. Can everyone take a seat, please? We are going to start our meeting momentarily. Okay, so can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for...
Please take a seat. We are continuing our tradition of having our very own Sayaset High School Adelants and Choral Pride perform their signature piece and more for us at the December meeting. And let's welcome Dr. Christopher Hill, our Coordinator of Fine and Performing Arts, to make the introduction. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Ms. Chang and the Board of Education for having us here this evening as we really start our holiday season. Typically, when we think of the holidays, we think of it starting with Thanksgiving, which is a wonderful holiday, not just for the turkey, but also because it's an opportunity for us to show our gratitude for the things that we have and also to share the gifts that we've been given. So in that way, you'll find us often with our musical groups doing community service, going to nursing homes, hospitals, etc. And this evening, we have the benefit of having two of our Choral Groups here really to do just that, really to show their gratitude to our community for all their support throughout the year and also to share their gifts, the gifts of music that they've been given from their families and from their teachers throughout the years. So here with us this evening to kick off the holiday season, we have two wonderful groups from the high school. We have the Adelants and we have Choral Pride, and both of those groups are under the direction of Ms. Kristen Howell.
At this point, we would like to start our December Board of Education meeting. We will have Dr. Patricia Rufo, Associate Superintendent for Business, who will begin a public hearing on real property tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. Dr. Rufo? Dr. Rufo? And the audience to the public, on the topic of public hearing only, will be held after the presentation. The regular audience to public, will follow at the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. We're beginning the hearing for, um, the real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. Back in 2005, the Board of Education adopted the real property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers. And that provided a 10% reduction in assessed value of applicants' property values on their school taxes as well. And in March, on March 28th, 2023, the Nassau County Executive signed a local law which reduced the number of years required to serve as a volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance workers for five years to two years in order to qualify for the exemption. So this evening, we're presenting a resolution to follow that, which is to reduce the number of years required from five years to two years in order to receive the partial exemption on assessed value of the property. So that concludes, um, the statement of the resolution and the hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Rufo. And the, uh, this is going to be the audience to the public. If anyone wishes to come up to, um, discuss only about the hearing, you may come up now. Okay, this closes the audience to public for the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of November 6th and November 20th. And November 27th, 2023, more meetings. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Pars, seconded by Ms. Kosia. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Rufo, may we have the Treasures Report?
Okay, as shown on the Treasures Report, the cash on hand for the month end, October 2023, was eighty-three million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents. It shows that all bank balances for all of the cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rufo. Can I have a motion to approve Dr. Rufo's Treasures Report? Mr. Greckel, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now, we'll move on to Dr. Rogers' Superintendent's Report. Dr. Rogers, all yours.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to give everyone an update on our plans for the facilities proposition the board's been working on and on the anti-bias task force the board established last week. And I have some thoughts to offer to our community and to our students. But first, I'll explain the conspicuously awkward seating arrangements. I was exposed all weekend to COVID, and so I know that people will sometimes observe what I do and infer that maybe the rules have changed. The rules have not changed, but what I'm doing is trying to keep people around me safe. So hopefully, I don't turn positive. But for now, I'm keeping my distance from everyone so that I don't have to call anybody tomorrow and say, "Oh, I have bad news for you." So this is my, my rule for myself only, is as long as I keep testing negative, I'll keep my distance and I'll keep my mask on. So first up, the facilities work. At our previous meeting, the board finalized a draft plan for the community's consideration and feedback. Emphasis on, this is a draft plan. And we want to get community feedback. And in fact, the last time we did a large project, back in 2016, a lot of that community feedback was incorporated into the final project that was proposed to the public. So we are anxious to hear the public's feedback. The elements of the plan are already posted on our website, and we'll be meeting with leaders from the PTA this week to get their feedback on the plan, but also on how best to present it to the community so it's understandable and straightforward. So we'll be doing those explanatory meetings by Zoom because we've found that it increases attendance and that more people are able to take advantage of those meetings. So I'm hopeful that with the feedback we get from the public, we'll be able to further refine the proposal before putting it up for a vote. So on to the anti-bias task force. So that, last Friday, late in the day, I met with the newly-appointed co-chairs of the task force, two of whom are able to be with us this evening, Rabbi Jamie Shalavet and Dr. Uzma Sayed. They're joined by Pastor Rebecca Sheridan, the third co-chair. At our planning meeting, we identified organizations that represented broad constituencies within the Syosset learning community and within the community at large to have a stake in addressing bias head-on. We're in the process of recruiting the remaining members, and once appointed, we will have an organizational meeting and at least one public meeting before the holiday break. The co-chairs plan to meet with groups of students to hear their perspectives, suggestions, concerns, and aspirations. They'll also meet with experts and organizations working to fight bias and intolerance in society. They'll provide forums for the public to share its thoughts and concerns, recommendations, and expertise. We've created an email address where the public can send thoughts and suggestions for the task force's consideration that addresses antibias@scioschools.org. Antibias is all one word, no punctuation, at scioschools.org. A staff member will acknowledge receipt, and the thoughts will be shared with the co-chairs. I also want to share some personal reflections with the community over the last several weeks. At the last several board meetings, I've observed a community that is upset about, angry about acts that have upset the harmony that we've tried for so many years to achieve. I've observed people who are understandably wondering whether those acts represent a risk to themselves or especially their children. I've seen people wanting to be seen, wanting to be heard, wanting to have their concerns validated and prioritized. And I've seen people expressing frustration in the hopes that those of us who are responsible for their children take those concerns seriously and wondering if we do. I assure everyone, we do. To that latter point, everything that gets reported gets investigated. And we will go as far as the facts and the evidence will take us. Anonymous allegations rarely get us very far. Courageous eyewitnesses do. And if we were to discern a linkage or a pattern in the incidents that have occurred, we would share it as transparently as the law would allow and address it as forcefully as possible. But I've also seen something remarkable at these board meetings. I've seen people hearing their neighbors' anguish and offering their support. I've seen people learn about injustices others have faced and react with humanity and empathy, which in no way dilutes their own concerns, but instead finds common cause. I saw Muslim members of our community say we should fight antisemitism, and a rabbi say we should fight Islamophobia. My point is, I'm convinced we can't solve these problems alone. We all need allies. Allies to fight antisemitism, allies to fight Islamophobia, allies to fight Asian hate and racism. To have an ally, you have to be an ally. And to do that, you have to be prepared for the possibility that your kindness or your empathy won't be reciprocated. But it won't have been a failure. I like to quote Aesop, who said, "No act of kindness, no matter how small, is ever wasted." I recently read a statement from a college president who suggested we must, quote, "Fight the forces that are trying to divide us," unquote. I don't know if there are such forces in Syosset or not, but I do know that no one is safe until everyone is safe, and we are all safer with allies. In Syosset, I believe understanding can defeat intolerance, love can overcome isolation, and empathy can overcome hate. I've personally been so very proud to work in Syosset, a community that is as diverse as any on Long Island and has been a leader in recognizing and celebrating that diversity in ways that are tangible and meaningful. I've personally been fortunate that I've rarely had to face bias because of the body that I was born into. But make no mistake, it doesn't make me feel exempt from the fight against bias. Quite the opposite. It underscores just how unfair bias is and motivates my sense of injustice. So my focus is on the 7,000 learners right in front of me, and they consume my full attention. As we've become increasingly more diverse, we no longer have any majority group. Thus, it's likely many, if not most, of our students have potentially faced or will face bias. We come from all around the world: Western Europe and Eastern Europe, North Asia and South Asia, East Asia and Southeast Asia, Africa and Central and South America. Our families speak at least 43 languages. We are straight and otherwise, able-bodied and challenged. We are first generation and 10th generation. We are Jewish and Muslim, Protestant and Catholic, Hindu and Sikh, Buddhist and Taoist, agnostic and atheist, and others I undoubtedly overlooked. My apologies. It's tempting, but mistaken, to focus on what our students don't have in common instead of what they do. They are all students here together in Syosset. They are pre-kindergartners and seniors, athletes and scholars, artists and writers, thespians and musicians, inventors and creators, friends and neighbors, and often, many of those things all at once. They are sometimes incredibly foolish and sometimes surprisingly wise. Sometimes brave, sometimes daunted, never ordinary and often remarkable. They all want to be safe. They all want to be successful. They all want to have friends. They all want to be loved. I have something to say to these young people. The older you become, the more responsibility you have. Not just for your own actions, but a responsibility to your community: your friends, your school community, the community in which you live. Make every community you're a part of stronger. Help it heal, support its members. Love without expecting reciprocation. Be brave in fighting injustice. And I don't just mean the grand gestures that might make the bright spot one week. I'm talking about something more practical and grounded. We adults may make the rules, but you students create your own culture. We can define what is right and wrong, and we can enforce it in our classrooms and on our technology. We can dole out consequences. But you students are the ones who see what is said beyond our reach on social media, gaming chats, in the hallways, in the locker rooms. Students alone can define what is, and more importantly, is not, acceptable when no adult is listening or looking. It takes a lot of courage to challenge the status quo alone. And no one wants to be excluded from any community, no matter how small. That's why I've always found I'm braver with a friend. But, young people, I'll leave you with the immortal words of Winnie the Pooh: "You are braver than you believe. You are stronger than you seem and smarter than you think. But the most important thing is, even if we're apart, I'll always be with you." So, young people, be brave enough to make a difference, bit by little bit, and you'll find out that we are always with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Are there any questions for Dr. Rogers? Ms. Abramson?
Thank you for your words, Dr. Rogers. I just wanted to comment on the anti-bias task force and the groups that are not specific, like the PTA and those, and, um, suggest that maybe the co-chairs select from suggestions from each of those groups in order to maintain, um, equal diversity within the group and, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Representations. Um, and that we make sure that everyone is, has the same goals of progressing forward.
Anyone else with questions for Dr. Rogers?
So that concludes my report. I'm sorry, respond to Ms. Abramson? Yeah. So when we talked with the co-chairs, we certainly recognized the need for balance on the, uh, on the task force. And if we were going to have individuals who represent a constituency, there has to be some formal structure within that constituency for how they identify someone who could speak on their behalf. So that's entirely in line with the conversation that we had with the co-chairs of the task force.
Okay, are there any more questions for Dr. Rogers? Okay. So there are no legislative items, and we're moving to audience to the public. Before we close the audience to public, I would like to invite Rabbi Jamie and also Dr. Sayed to say a few words. Thank you.
So for most of you that do know me, it's very rare that I'm at a loss for words. And the way this meeting started out, it was really something that I don't think I've ever experienced in my life, and I think many of us felt the same being in this room. Jamie, you know, summarized it so well to get people to be calm, but what I was really feeling, what I think many of us in the room were feeling, was just the sadness of what was actually unfolding in front of our eyes and how we are all so much better than that. And our kids are showing us, by leading by example, how much better we are all than that and how we cannot let our emotions get the best of us and lead to that kind of situation, right? We're in this community together. We have built this beautiful community together from the beginning. Every time I've reached out to the administration, to the district, to the parents, to the community, it's all been about building this gorgeous community that we have, the diversity, the strength that we have together. And we've seen that over the years. And no matter how many difficulties come our way, we are going through a challenging time. We cannot let it tear us apart. It is not going to help us at all. And I think as we've taken a minute to take a deep breath and relax and reflect, we are now realizing how much stronger we are together if we just work towards our common goals and how we have to have each other's backs. And the last few messages that we had, the speeches from the speakers, were really, really heartwarming. And I think we can all relate to that because really, it's all about the kids. It's all about protecting all of our kids and making sure that they feel safe and that we all thrive as a community because we have to get through this together. So Jamie and I have a very, you know, we are honored to have this tremendous task that we're going to be working on together. And we will always stand by each other. Rebecca, Jamie, myself, any single person in this community, I will, all of us feel like we will show up to support and be there for each community member, each child. Because at the end of the day, we are all humans and we're all connected and we are all part of this beautiful district. And I know that we are all better than this. And so what we hope to do together is to really continue to listen to everyone, to continue to have the voices of our kids, who you heard from tonight, be represented, and to make sure that we bring the positivity back. You know, I know there's a lot going on, but we can't let it destroy everything that we've built together over the years. I have grown up here, for those of you that don't know me, and we have, this is a beautiful community, and it's become more and more beautiful over the years. I'm sorry I have my back over to a lot of you over here, but we continue to be this beautiful community. And our strength is with all of us being together. And, and we see how we're unraveling. And nothing good is going to come out of this. And we have to remember all the good times. We have to remember all the times we've been with each other, breaking bread, being out together for all the school events, for the, you know, out-of-school events. We're all friends, we're all neighbors, you know? Our kids play together. We are better than this. So let's just focus on that. Let's stop, you know, put away the negativity and focus on the positivity in our kids because that's all we all want. And so together, we're hoping to work on the same and really take all the feedback. You know, we love hearing from the community. We're going to have the representation that everybody was discussing before. And, you know, we're going to have more forums like this. But I think we're really not going to get anywhere if we keep coming at it from a place of hate and anger and sadness and frustration. We have to just also think before we say something that we're not going to be able to take back. So just, you know, taking a deep breath and thinking about all the good times is what's really going to get us through this.
Absolutely. Let's give a round of applause first. I, I couldn't agree with you more, my dear friend. And we just, we want to say a few things. First of all, we are, along with our Interface Coalition that we are a part of, as this moves you far-
Farhan-
Yes.
And Rabbi Jay Weinstein-
Need to introduce.
All sitting together here. And I was before I started running up and down the aisles, but, and, uh, we, we are standing here together or sitting here together because we are friends and we care about each other here in Syossett and all over the world, but we are here and our children are here. So, um, I also want to share with you, we are, we are planning with that Interfaith Coalition, I don't know where to stand. We are planning with that Interfaith Coalition to have these, in small groups, these difficult conversations, remaining calm with each other to learn not just about our celebrations, which is also, also fun, and trust me, if there's food, I'm there. So definitely that, and also to talk through what we disagree on as well, because the point of being good friends, as our good friend Rabbi Jason Fruithandler, uh, shares with us, is being able to disagree and still care about one another as human beings. That's the lesson that our children are already teaching us. Thanks. So, and, and the last thing is, look at us for a moment. We have a Muslim woman who wears a hijab, a short Jewish lesbian woman. We know what hate is, okay? This, this has been our lives, and we know that it doesn't happen to us because of only one thing about us. Everyone has experienced this. There's not one, and I know, Dr. Rogers, you tell all about how you are lucky that you were born into a body that is not, you know, that is highly privileged, but let me tell you, right now, people really don't like straight white men. So I'm just, I'm warning you that nobody's immune, you know? And I can joke about this because you all now know me, but my point is, really, we are all the same, as my good friend Uzma said. And the sooner we learn that, that our, even our disagreements make us more alike, the better off we're going to be. So that's our anti-bias task force. If you want to be a part of that, what that means is, we see each other as human first, then we can move from there, and that's what we plan to do.
Okay, this closes the audience to public, and then, um, I just want to let the audience know that, uh, Dr. Rogers will try to answer some of the questions, so if you want to stay to, uh, listen to his, you know, remarks, uh, you could. And I want to thank Rabbi Jamie and Dr. Sayed for the beautiful messages to the community. And, um, I know there's going to be a lot of work for the anti-bias task force to do, but we are very confident that, um, we are moving in the right direction. Okay, so moving on to the next, it's going to be the discussion items. Okay, um, the board's going to continue with its business, so if you guys want to stay, please welcome to stay. If not, um, you could talk outside of the auditorium, so we could, uh, continue with our business, please. All right. Before we move on to the discussion item, I just want to say a few words. We believe it's important for the community to witness the board at work and observe real-life debates in public. These discussions are sometimes lengthy and sometimes brief, but crucial for thorough consideration of all aspects. Please note that the board strives for transparency in its decision-making process and is, is confident in the direction where the anti-bias task force is headed. Okay? Right? And, um, and for our discussion item, I would like to ask for volunteers from the board to represent Syossett on the Nassau Bosse Budget Advisory Committee. Can I get volunteers? Okay, uh, Ms. Koshyer, uh, Mr. Greco, and, uh, uh, Dr. Park, can you be the alternate as a backup person? Great. All right, so, um, the budget orientation meeting will be held on Thursday, December 14th at 7:00 PM, and specific budgets will be reviewed on Thursday, January 11th, 2024, and Tuesday, February 1st, 2024 at 7:00. All right, so we will have Ms. Koshyer and Mr. Greco representing Syossett with, along with Dr. Park, um, as a backup person. Thank you so much. And there are no unfinished business. The following is new business. A items. A1 is the approval of the appointment of staff changes, certified staff for November 2023. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A2 is the approval of stipends and hourly rates for 2023 and 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A3 is the approval of coaching recommendations, winter 2023, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A4 is the approval of ratification of stipulation of agreement, CSEA. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A5 is the approval of school calendar, 2024, 2025. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B items. B1 and B2 can be taken together. They are the approval of this committee on special education and the committee on preschool special education recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there, uh, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B3 is the approval of student club charters, 2023, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B4 is the approval of authorization for contracts for federal Part B funds. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyer. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B5 is the policy 4327 Alternative Instruction, first read. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry. Oh, first reading, did I say first reading? Oh, first reading. Oh. Okay. B6 is the, uh, B6 is the approval of appointments. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C items. C1 is, is the authorization of service contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C2 is the authorization of special education and/or nursing contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Koshyer, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C3 is the authorization for piggybacking, Belmore Merrick, uh, CHSD, building and grounds equipment. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C3 is the release and settlement agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Koshyer, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C5 is the volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers, property tax exemption. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitin, seconded by Mr. Ostrich. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C6 is the approval of the disposal of broken, surplus, and/or obsolete equipment, supplies and books. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Abramson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Greco and Ms. Levitin. Thank you very much.
Students should come to school. They should feel safe. We have an obligation as the adults who work here to do that, but the one thing that we can't do in the school is reach beyond the walls of the buildings to affect the wider community. What I heard and what I was so encouraged by towards the end of this meeting is the community taking responsibility for itself. We will absolutely be a partner in that work. We will do everything that we can. We are certainly not afraid of hard work around here, and we will do it, but we need partners in order to do that. As I said in my remarks at the beginning of the meeting, when parents are our partners, there's little we can't do. So, I also said in my remarks at the beginning that students make the culture, and when I said that, I was specifically thinking about the culture of students who feel like they've gotten so accustomed to hearing something that they don't notice it anymore. That's a culture, and students have to change that culture. We'll be partners in that as well. We'll enforce it where we're notified about it, but students have an obligation to, to keep one another safe by saying what is and wasn't, isn't okay in their schools. Yes, we run the schools, but these schools are the students' schools, and they can define the culture as much as we can. So, as difficult as it is to sit through these conversations, certainly it's difficult to have some of the invective directed at me personally, I would say that in the last several meetings, I continue to see this community doing the hard work of working through a really difficult time. And even though that hard work is messy, I see us making progress. And as hard as it is to imagine, I'm optimistic because of how I see this community working through things. We will be the partner. We will certainly work very hard on behalf of the board to do everything that we can to make it better, and I just ask that everyone in the community also share that vision that the co-chairs laid out for us at the very end, a Syossett where we recognize how diverse we are, we celebrate how diverse we are, and everyone feels safe and welcomed in that diversity. I will certainly commit to doing everything that I can do, and I will expect nothing less of my team. Thank you.